Okay, I'd like to call the school board meeting of Independent School District 42, Little Falls, Minnesota to order on April 20th, 2020. And before we start, I'm going to read a statement. School Board Script for Using During Meetings Held by Telephone Conference or Other Electronic Means. Little Falls Community Schools General Process for Remote School Board Meetings. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay at Home, and Guidelines about Limiting Person-to-Person Contact Due to COVID-19 Pandemic, this meeting of the Little Falls School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, Meetings by Telephone or Other Electronic Means. Due to the Health Pandemic, the School Board determined that it's not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent or school district's legal counsel, to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Also, I want to ask that each person tonight that makes a motion or seconds a motion, please identify yourself so that Julie will know who made the motions. Thank you. Uh, I guess we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and say the pledge in our homes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District Mission Statement. Little Falls Community Schools Promotes Personal and Academic Excellence in a Collaborative, Safe, and Engaging Environment. Uh, number, item number four, uh, with the addendums is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addendums?
Brad Lager, so moved.
Okay, and Jay is seconding?
Jay's moving, seconded.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie? Julie?
We're not getting a-
We're not getting a Julie response.
She's muted. Julie, your audio is currently muted.
I'll put in Jay.
Yes.
And myself, yes, and now we'll see if Julie's back. Julie, are you there with your audio?
We've heard her before.
Yeah.
We lost her altogether.
Yep.
Okay, well, motion, can I say motion carry?
Yes.
Five zero, yep.
Yeah. Okay, number five, uh, public comments. I'm assuming we have none. There are none.
There are none.
Yeah. Okay, number six is the consent agenda, and that includes personnel, approval of prior meeting minutes, uh, approval of financial transactions, approval of summer session for students 16 years of age and under. Could I have a motion to approve, uh, to approve the consent agenda?
Blue was says a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Jay, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair Member of the Board, um, obviously the summer session would be based on whether we are able to have a summer session in June.
None will vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We'll move on to number seven, Resolution for Acceptance of Gifts. Sharon?
Whereas the following have generously offered to donate to Little Falls Community Schools, Pike Creek Township, a donation of $300 to Community Services for Youth Recreation, the Jewish Federation of Greater Seattle, um, with Mo and Myra Dinner Memorial Fund, a donation of $450 to the Community High School for the James A. Mitchy Scholarship Fund, Tim and Karen Johnson, a donation of $55 for food containers. The next few are all for the food program. That would be Alberta Kerstedt of $50, Dick and Jean Konopic of $50, Owen and Levon Olson, $200, Diana D. Vaverek, $25, Carol Anderson, $100, Virginia Pedersen, $200, and an anonymous gift of $20. And those were all to the food program. Next is Joanne Larson, a donation of $200 to the Abigail Seeger Fine Arts Memorial Scholarship. The Catholic Health Initiative donated $1,000 for the Marla J. Nagel Memorial Scholarship. The Sunny's Willing Ice Fest Pay It Forward, donation of $13,000 to the Flyer Pride Backpack Weekend Program. Also from the Sunny's Willing Ice Fest Pay It Forward, a donation of $2,000 to the Care Closet. The Foundation for Impact on Literacy and Learning Incorporated, awarded to the Little Falls Deca as part of their food drive, a donation of $500 designated for the care closet. The next three are for the FFA Club for their 90th Anniversary Celebration. These include Pine Country Bank, a donation of $200, Compeer Financial, a donation of $350, and Peter and Lisa Rimshite, a donation of $100. And those were all to the FFA Club for their 90th Anniversary Celebration. Therefore, be it resolved by the Little Falls Community School Board of Education to gratefully accept these gifts. I need a motion at this time?
So moved. Kathy Adamant.
And a second?
I'll second that, Brad Lager.
Thank you, Brad. We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that Resolution for Acceptance of Gifts is passed, and we certainly want to thank all the generous individuals for donating to our school district. We'll go to number eight, Report from Board Members. Sharon?
Oh, none of us have been able to attend very many meetings right now, but I guess we're going to be learning how to do it this way. But I do want to say that I do think there's been a lot of wonderful feedback that we were getting from the people that are doing a great job on our Facebook pages and sharing especially the high school seniors' pictures and a little bit about each of them. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from all of that. So thank you to all the people working hard on that.
Okay, Mark?
Well, I can say I've heard nothing out in the community, so we must be doing things right. I was really disappointed I missed Cuthbert Day, but that's all I have to report.
Okay, Brad?
Um, I don't have anything to report. I just want to say though to all of our faculty, everybody involved with how we're running this year, keep it up. You guys are doing a great job and, and when we get an appropriate time to thank you, we're going to spend some time thanking everybody for everything they've done. That's all that I have to say.
Julie?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Jay?
Well, I'm just thankful that we were able to find a special ed director and, uh, it was nice to hear the good news this morning and, and thanks, Steve, for, uh, following up on it again and having the gal get signed up and it's, uh, going to be an exciting year if we get everybody else on board that we need to have. So, that's it.
Okay, and myself, I was going to turn the camera towards my back porch where I spend 90% of my days pottying plants for my plant sale that is coming up for the scholarship fund. That will be starting on May 8th. My living room is full, my basement is full, my back porch is full. And as my granddaughter said, Grandma, you're even sleeping with plants. I have cats in the bedroom. Uh, I also wanted to comment about the windows in school and the buses. As I see the buses carrying the lunches around, hearts on the windows for the kids to see, and it, it's just really positive. And I think it gives the kids and parents a, a really warm feeling. So, that's my report. Steve, Superintendent's Report?
Madam Chair Members of the Board, thank you very much. Uh, thanks for meeting this way. Um, I, I, I'm glad that everything's working out, uh, so far. So that's great. Uh, yeah, lots of, lots of coronavirus, obviously. Um, you know, it, you know, today was the, was the start of the, of yet another week. March 17th seems so long ago, uh, you know, now more than five weeks ago, when all of this was foisted at us and, and, uh, I, I couldn't be more proud of the way that we've responded across the district on, on so many challenges, many of which we never had even ever considered as a challenge before to something like this. Uh, we, uh, we, we focused early on on meeting the governor's three main charges that he leveled at schools, which was, uh, you know, childcare for, for, uh, tier one and tier two workers, um, continuing a food program, and of course, the distance learning piece. Um, I'm, I'm pretty amazed that, uh, we are doing tremendous work across all three of those areas. Uh, and I've been able to share with board members, uh, some of the, some of the reports that I get from parents and community members. Please know that we're getting a number of those each, each week, uh, that, uh, speak about how, how impressed, uh, community members are. Our food program and childcare, um, have had members, people that are receiving the services, take care of the employees, um, generously donate, um, whether it's Caribou Coffee or gift certificates to our workers as a way to say thank you for all the extra work that you've put in. Uh, people are recognizing, um, the, the hard work that our people are putting into this and, and are very, very appreciative. Our, our people have been amazing. Um, you know, I've, I've walked into the school at 5:00 in the morning, uh, and at 5:30, we've got 45 or 50 people in the school commons, um, ready to, uh, attack the food. At 6:00 AM, we've got, um, our workers over at the childcare area ready to go. Um, so the hour of the day doesn't matter. Our people are responding. In visiting with teachers, I know they're getting emails at all hours of the day. Um, many of them are answering them in real time, uh, because they want to give that attention to the kids, um, to try and meet when the kids are doing their best to, to learn in this new and different way. Uh, and it, overall, um, it's been an amazing process. We sent out to teachers today a questionnaire of basically in four different questions, what have you learned, um, from this, from these last few weeks? We're really excited to hear the answers that come back. Uh, and, and I think we're all wise enough to know that this will forever change education, uh, the way that it's delivered, the way that it's received and, and its perception. Uh, that's both exciting and daunting at the same time. Um, I'm glad that we were as far along the path towards significant systemic changes we were when this hit. Obviously, we would have liked to have been a little further along. Um, but the fact that, um, philosophically, uh, this is the types of changes systemically that we've been talking about here in Little Falls for five years, uh, has put us at a, at the cusp of something pretty special, I think, as, as we continue to prepare our kids for a world that's vastly different than the world that you and I grew up in. I get asked multiple times a day by various people, um, will the kids be back this year? Um, that's not a question that I can answer. Obviously, we all have our hedge bets on that. Um, the governor, I'm sure, will address that soon. Uh, but, you know, my, my pat answer has become to prepare like the kids won't be back, um, because we'll be ready for them if they do come back, but we can't prepare for them if they're not. And so we have to believe that they, they won't be back this year over the next 26 days of school, which is what we have left. Um, and so that, that means we're kicking into high gear, uh, preparation to do those special May events that, um, you know, Sharon, you kind of mentioned, you know, you haven't been to any meetings or anything lately, uh, so nothing to report upon. May is when you guys were always so busy at the board level, uh, to hit all the recognition banquets and, and, um, the festivities and, and scholarship nights and graduations that we're all, that we're all a part of. We don't believe that we'll be able to do those in traditional fashion this year, but please make no mistake, we're going to be doing them. Uh, how we do them is, is what we're working on right now. Um, you mentioned the Facebook and, and social media posts about, um, the seniors. That's just a part of our big plan on making this as special as we possibly can for our, for our kids and families involved. And so as we get closer, um, to those dates and we get the actual confirmation that we won't be back, um, with kids in school, then we'll start, um, really releasing some of the planning that we've been working so hard on, um, to get ready for. So, so keep tuned in. Um, we are, we are obviously, um, going to take this, um, seriously and, and make it really special for our kids and for, for our families. Um, but overall, I got to be honest with you, the last two weeks versus the first three weeks, um, things have been really, really smooth, and I owe that to the professionalism of, of our staff. Uh, you know, the 300-plus employees that we have, um, plus the bus drivers, um, have all really pitched in and, and made this truly a team effort. When you walk into, into the school now, it's almost a camaraderie building exercise. People really working together, uh, to do what's best for kids and families, and it's, and it's pretty humbling to be perfectly honest with you. I, I couldn't be more proud to be a Little Falls flyer than I am today. As we look towards the future, it's, uh, murky at best. We really don't know what to do. Um, one of the things that's, that's on our list, of course, as we mentioned summer school earlier on, is community services. Uh, we know as soon as school ends, community services picks up with summer activities. Um, so in meeting with LaJoy today, um, you know, we are in kind of a holding pattern until we get some direction. There are some districts, uh, across the state that have already canceled all summer activities. We're not at that point yet. Um, we're holding out hope that if, if it can't be June activities, maybe it can be July activities. And we want to provide our kids any opportunity, even if it's a small window of time in July and August, where we can actually do some things to get some kids back into a, a normal routine. Uh, we want to be able to provide that. Um, so we're not going to make any kind of bold statement about we're, we're going to cancel all summer activities until we absolutely know that that's what we are told to do. Um, and we're just continue to play a flexible, uh, deadline, uh, to that point. In a sense, it's kind of like with the school trips as well. Um, certainly, we, we, uh, you know, we had the opportunity to, to hear at our last board meeting, um, a, a couple of presentations, um, and decided, and for good reason, um, to take those off, um, the, the agenda tonight for any kind of an approval. Um, please know that I've met with those groups and actually have another meeting tomorrow, um, as we're trying to look to the future. Um, as I said, it's a murky future at best, but trying to take a, a really prudent course forward as to what might be acceptable deadlines for us to look at, at trips in the future. Um, is it 2021? Is it 2022, um, where we feel that we can go in? One of the things that, um, all tour companies are, are now being asked to provide are obviously cancellation pieces. Um, who would have ever thought a year and a half ago that this is what we have to be dealing with? Um, the fact that it was so large scale, uh, really resulted in full cancellations and refunds. Um, we just want to make sure that that's guaranteed as we go forward with any kind of, um, uh, trip in the future. So as I make, make more of these meetings, I'll provide the board members with an update as to where we're at and, and what folks are thinking as we look towards 2021 and 2022, uh, for possible trips. Uh, one item that, um, we continue to, to meet upon, uh, as we, uh, continue to wrap up our, our referendum, um, we, we find that we still have some additional dollars and, and one of the pieces that was a, a key aspect, uh, years ago and continues to be would be the construction of a bus garage. Um, and so a, a bus garage, not, not fully enclosed, but a bus garage that's, that's more of a weather protector, um, provides enough parking spaces for all of our, um, district-owned buses and vehicles, including trailers, um, on our school land that would be located ostensibly across from, um, the Memorial Drive, Circle Drive area, um, located to the south of the high school old main entrance. We have that gravel lot there that the district owns. If we could move, uh, into a school bus garage there and vacate the area by the, uh, by the dizzy bee and across, uh, you know, to the, to the, uh, east of, of the hockey arena, it allows some additional activities to perhaps take place in that space as well. Um, we, working with Contiguity, uh, we've gotten an estimate that it's well within our, within our realm. Um, we're waiting for, uh, what would look like a hard copy drawing of that and, uh, to, uh, to be able to orient that on that rectangular piece of land that would allow hopefully a, a drive-in and a drive-out kind of access. That's the one question we have as we're looking at the size of a facility of about 60 by 130. Um, to get all of our pieces in there, can we drive in and drive out on different entrances? That's what we're going to work at, um, here over the next, uh, couple of weeks as, as Contiguity continues to, to fine tune that. That's the bulk of my report tonight. Are, are there any questions or clarifications that, that are needed?
Steve, one thing I've been asked is if general public, parents, school board members, if they can come in and volunteer yet for helping with the food program?
No, because right now we have enough help, um, with our, with our folks. Um, so honestly, we've, uh, as we've gotten more fine-tuned with this and streamlined, it has gotten like clockwork. Um, and right now, um, I know Shelley worked the other day, Mark worked the other day, uh, at the food line. Um, and holy cow, we are whipping this off in, in really, um, in great time and, and healthy time as well. So we, uh, we have multiple stations set up. It's a far cry from our first couple of days when, quite frankly, it was, it was kind of a, a chaotic mess. Um, now it's so streamlined and, uh, we have a second crew that comes in and sanitizes everything after, um, the first crew is done, and it is really working quite well. So right now, honestly, for safety's sake as well, we don't, we don't want volunteers, uh, in the building, uh, to, and, uh, you know, with our, with our staff, we're in good shape. It's great.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions, we'll move on to item number 10, Old or Unfinished Business. 10.1 is approval of the 2020, 2020, 2021 School Calendar. Uh, does anyone, well, I guess we'll make, have a motion made first. Let's have a motion to move the Board of Education to approve the 2020, 2021 School Calendar.
Brad Lager, so approved.
Motion by Brad, second by Jay. Now, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair Members of the Board, obviously, this is again based off, um, the, the coronavirus leaving us and, and being allowed to open up school on time. Um, so please know that this may come back as a, as a secondary item somewhere down the road.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that is passed. We'll now go down to New Business, item 11. And 11.1 is Community Services Salary Recommendation for the 2020, 21 School Year. Um, we need a motion to move that the Board of Education approve the Community Services Salary Recommendations.
So moved. Jay?
Move by Jay, is there a second?
Mark, I'll second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion?
Not a discussion. I have a question. In the past, sometimes when we were able to, you know, have LaJoy come in, has this changed much in salary range from past?
Yep, so, uh, good question. Here's, here's what I got from LaJoy today as we talked about that very item. Um, the classroom instructor for driver's education has risen from $27 to $30 an hour. It has to do with the workload. It's more time in prepping for that, um, job. Um, otherwise, the only other thing that's been added is, um, after-school enrichment classes have, have added an, an assistant student to it. Um, otherwise, everything else salary-wise is the same.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion is passed. Okay, we'll go to Community, item 11.2, Community Services Participation Fees for 2020, 21. We need a motion that the Board approve the Community Services Participation Fees. So moved below. Motion by Sharon, is there a second?
Second, Mark.
Second by Mark. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that motion is passed. 11.3 is Food Service Prices for 2021. Uh, we need a motion to move that the Board approve the food services prices for 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved. Brad Lager.
A motion by Brad, second by Sharon. Is there any discussion?
Is there an inch? Excuse me, is there a change in these prices previous?
There is not. It is exactly the same across the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that has passed. Item 11.4, Approval of May Retiree Reception and Awards Presentation. We would like to honor our district retirees with a reception at the Community Middle School Media Center prior to the May board meeting. Following the reception at the board meeting, retirees will be recognized and presented with retiree gifts. Uh, I guess we should make a motion and then just, there'll be discussion, I'm assuming. So someone want to make a motion that we-
Jay?
Jay made the motion and-
Second.
Sharon's second. Okay, any discussion?
What is our, our turn of the plan?
Uh, we don't have one.
Okay, that was easy.
Yeah, so, you know, the, uh, the EMLF is going on with their social at this time as well. They always have an end-of-year social, and some of you have been there, obviously. They have that rescheduled to a May date, um, and we're just kind of playing this by ear and seeing what happens, you know? Worst case is, we're probably going to look at doing this in September or October. But, you know, you know, that, that's probably what it's going to be, but we wanted to get this out on the, on the agenda. Um, and obviously, when the, when and if the governor comes out and says something about moving the dates back, we'll, we'll just reassess it and see where we're at.
Steve, how many retirees do we have this year?
Oh gosh, I think there's going to be 12 or 15 by the time we're done.
Okay.
17, Julie said, close to 17.
17?
Yep. Some of those are mid-year. We have a handful of mid-year retirements as well that, um, they get to choose whether they want to be recognized this year or next year. Um, so some chose for this year that are retiring in October or December.
Any other discuss-
Uh, can I ask Steve a question?
Sure.
Steve, just in case some of them are going to be gone in the fall, and I, I think we usually give them a gift of gratitude to, do we plan on doing that in May just to give it to them if they're not going to be there and then, or how or what or, um, I don't know. I mean, we're in uncharted territory here.
Yeah, so what, what I would recommend us doing is, um, you know, Julie will connect with them, um, and let them know that May 18th is the date. Um, if we have to cancel, Julie will then reconnect with them and, and, and probably ask that question. We have a gift for you, because she's, the gifts are already ordered and coming soon. Um, so they're engraved gifts. Um, so that would be, I guess, the, the question that, that we would ask at that point. Now, do you want to stop in to pick up your gift, or do you want to wait until you're officially recognized and receive it? So-
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can't you deliver by bus?
We'll just change the hearts on the windows from "we love you kids" to "we love you retirees." Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So there will be a reception at some time and awards presentation. We'll move down- We'll move down to eleven point five. Data infrastructure refresh. And Mark's gonna provide information at the meeting. So I guess we need a motion first and then Mark will fill us in. Could I have a motion to approve the data infrastructure?
Don't move. Jay?
Okay, Jay made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mark.
Mark seconded it. Okay, now we'll have Mark fill us in. The other Mark.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk about this. So basically, for about the past two years, we have been planning various aspects of this data center refresh. And can you guys hear me okay?
Yes. Yep, fine.
Okay, cuz I'm looking at the recording and it's not picking me up. So just give me a second.
Smart machine.
Well, you're clear here.
Loud and clear.
Well, we're gonna go with it. So what's, uh, so for the last two, basically two years, we've been planning this refresh, trying to figure out exactly what the needs are gonna be. And going through kind of our big dream wishlist and, and narrowing it down to precisely what we need to maintain a functional infrastructure within the district. And so I believe you all got a kind of a one-page summary of the project with some costs. As part of your packet, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of hot, give you the thirty thousand foot view of this project and then we'll go from there. So the first item is that there is a phone system on there. And basically what's going on is our current phone system, when we installed it back in two thousand and nine, ran us several hundred thousand dollars to install. It was part of a cooperative purchase that we did with the mid-state when we were still part of mid-state educational technology back in the day. But as, as digital technologies will do, they come to an end of a life scenario. And that's basically what we have here. Our phone system from the provider has been deemed end of life and a support. And so if we were to have an issue with that phone system, we are pretty much out of luck. We'd be spending money in an emergency situ, situation and scenario. And so the new phone system that we have opted for is a web-based management. So we pay an annual subscription fee to be a part of, of the phone or to have the licensing for the phone system. And then we pay, we also pay, we are paying straight up front for the phones. So of that cost, the biggest part of that cost right there is actually the repro, or the programming of a new phone system. Down the road, if we have to swap out the phones, we aren't gonna have to go out and buy a whole new sort of heart of software or anything. We're just gonna be able to replace the phones at a much reduced cost than that hundred and thirteen thousand that you see in front of you. The second piece there, the camera system, there's two parts to that. As you know, over the years, we've been installing HD cameras throughout the district. And sometimes those cameras die, sometimes we have to add cameras. And the newer cameras record in, in four K formats when, well, when you go from, uh, from a high definition format to a four K format, it requires extra data storage. And we're try, we try to have our data storage be at a capacity of two, of two weeks. But we've added so many cameras and, and had to replace cameras that we are now down to just one week worth of our retention capabilities. So that camera stored or camera system item is gonna do two things. One, it's gonna increase significantly. I mean, we're talking basically quadrupling our current camera storage capabilities plus allow us to have future expansion if we need to.
Oh, you answered your mark.
Lost your mark.
Now you lost me?
No.
Okay, so our camera system is going to allow us to expand our storage capacity, but basically ensure that we have a full two weeks worth of archive footage for any necessary reasons. And it also will replace the existing outdoor cameras that we have across the district. Many of them have, have just surpassed their life and, and need to be updated quite a bit. The simplicity item there, that is to replace the servers that are within the district. So I'm gonna give you a little bit of an astonishing number here, okay? So when I first came to Little Falls in two thousand and eight, we had approximately seventy-two, if I, I went back and looked at an old document, seventy-two physical servers across the district. And they were spread out at all of our buildings. And we did a project that first year to cut that number down and we got that number down to thirteen. And then in two thousand and thirteen, we did another project and we were able to, we replaced that set of servers, we were able to get down to seven. Well, now we're going to two. And that tells you right there how expensive a server is, that two servers are gonna run and their storage will run a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So that's, uh, that's a lot of data that we, that we maintain on those servers and, uh, and applications that we ask it to run. So, um, that just shows you how the technology has evolved. The UPS power backup, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that one with the one, the item at the bottom, the generator. So one of the challenges that we've had, because we've, we've been able to centralize our data and become much more efficient, we've needed to also increase our ability to maintain runtime and uptime. And over the last few years, for whatever reason, there's been times at the, where the power has had to been shut off or was out for weather-related reasons, power outages from Minnesota Power where we, we've lost power and therefore we've lost our data center capabilities to push out applications. And so sometimes those applications, because they're housed within the high school, power may be on at Lincoln or Dr. Knight or even over at Lindbergh in the middle school. And those people are sitting there out of luck because we have no power at the high school. So we are actually proposing a, a, a propane-powered backup emergency generator, which would be installed at the high school to run, it's not sized to run the entire building, it's sized only to run our data center operations. And then you see the item, the UPS power backup. So what we also are doing is putting UPS systems into every one of our data closets throughout the buildings across the district to ensure that if, if we have a ten-minute power outage or a quick blip that, that the network does not just drop and everybody's gotta wait for things to reboot and restart that for a fifteen-minute period or less, that we would continue to run and be operational. The three years additional current Fortinet, what that is, is it's just extending a, a warranty in our current firewall. The Arrow Hive is to replace all of our wireless network access points across the district. The Cisco item is to replace all of our data switches across the district. So then you see two items that are negative numbers, right? So this whole project comes to a grand total of about six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. But we have two funding sources that are gonna pay for a portion of this. And that's those two funding from E-Rate line items. Now, the funding from E-Rate line item twenty eighteen nineteen, that's covering the Cisco hardware, that money has to be spent this fiscal year. It has to be spent before June thirtieth. And so the, the other twenty, twenty-one line item, that number wouldn't have to be spent this fiscal year, but it would have to be spent by June thirtieth of next year. We just would have preferred to put it all towards doing this project all at once and, and use that money that way. The Microsoft Data Center is just some licensing and so is the VMware and the Beam. It's all licensing costs for the servers that we will be having. And so with that, I will stand or sit or listen for questions.
Yeah, Mark, I have a question.
Yep.
When I look at this, I'm seeing about forty thousand dollars worth of interest to American Capital on the five-year plan with interest rates the way they are. Is there another way to finance this where we would be less than forty thousand dollars for interest? If, if I'm seeing a hundred and seven thousand per year times, or you know, almost eight hundred times five, that looks to me to be about forty thousand dollars over the cost. And I'm just wondering, is there another way to finance it that would be cheaper than the forty thousand dollars?
So we've looked, I'll, I'll let Shelley answer that.
Actually, the interest is twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, if you take a hundred and seven thousand times five, what does that give you? Five hundred and thirty-five thousand, right?
Five thirty, five thirty-eight.
Yeah, and then you take seven or eight hundred times five is another four thousand. So if it's in that range, I'm just looking at interest rates that would be better than that. I don't know. That's the question I have.
Well, it's five hundred and thirty-eight thousand minus five hundred and ten thousand, so it's twenty-eight thousand in interest over five years.
It's, it's an interest rate, it's an interest rate of two point five eight percent.
Okay, that's the question I have is, with the interest rates falling like they have in the last, is that the best we can do? If it is, fine. If it isn't, is there another way to finance it?
Well, there are other ways to finance it, but this has been in the works. Mark, when did we meet? Back in January?
January. And then, and the interest rate has come down even from the initial number that they provided to us.
Okay, that's my question.
So, and, and we've looked in the, um, we've looked at, at other options too, Brad, in the past for other projects. And this company that we're working with right now has always come back as, as the cheapest option that we can find, unless we can find a, a vendor that's willing to give us a zero percent. And that's not, that's not in the cards on this one.
Just a question and I'm asking.
Yep.
You know, like I said, with the.
And this particular, this particular vendor was willing to give us a zero percent interest rate, but then we don't keep any of the equipment at the end of the lease.
Oh, gotcha. So, does the equipment just basically become obsolete anyway? It seems like every X amount of years, we get rid of it anyway. So, you know, maybe a zero percent interest rate if we're only gonna have it for five years anyway. I don't know. I'm just, these are, I mean, this is the first time I've seen it or talked about it. And that's just the only thing I can ask about, I guess.
Mark would probably be able to answer that.
Not all of the lease is hardware related. Mark can answer that.
Yeah, so some of it, I mean, some of that is licensing costs. You know, the licenses we own for, for the life of the equipment. Some of this is labor costs, you know? And so if it were all straight hardware, Brad, I'd say sure. But some of this equipment, I mean, let's take the Cisco networking switches, right? So the Cisco networking switches, most of the networking switches that we have right now in the district were purchased in two thousand and eight. So they've been, they've been in place for a long time, twelve years. And now it's time, I mean, just like our phone system is at end of life, those are now at end of life as well. And so we've got a, uh, well, they've been at end of life for a long time. We've just got a lot of hot spares. We have a lot of spares sitting around that if, if one were to die, we could throw one in.
Don't get me wrong, I don't disagree with the equipment and all of the purchasing and all of that. It was just the financing portion of it.
Yep, yep, I get it.
I know you wouldn't be bringing it forward unless we really needed it. And I trust you with that and, and that's the only thing that I had in mind. Because first time I've seen it, didn't have a chance to really look at it. And, uh, I, I'm totally satisfied with our needs that you're saying we need, and I don't have any problem with that. It was just the total amount of financing. And if, if that's the best we can do, then that's the best we can do.
Yeah, and I expect, Brad, that most of this equipment's gonna last us well more than five years. I mean, I think we're looking at seven to ten.
It's all, it's all a timing, it's all a timing issue too, related to the interest rate. Because, um, you know, like I said, we've been working on this since January. Mark's been working on it for years. But, um, Mark wanted the equipment on site and the work to start by May first, which means we needed to get all the paperwork going and finalized so that it can be presented at this board meeting. So locked in at interest rates prior to them going down.
Okay.
That satisfies my question.
Anyone else have any questions of anyone? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we'll move to item eleven point six, which is the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget adjustment. And instead of my trying to explain it, um, maybe I'll ask for a motion and then we'll have Shelley explain it.
So moved, Brad.
There's a second?
Second, Mark.
Okay, so there's been motion and a second, and now we'll have Shelley fill us in, please.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board. What I, what I'm presenting to you essentially is budget revisions to the current year budget. In short, essentially, we're making adjustments to three different areas. The general fund, the community service fund, and our federal programs area. The general fund, uh, back in January of twenty nineteen, you approved essentially a balanced budget. And so in looking at, um, revenues and expenditures, our enrollment is coming in lower than the projected enrollment that you also approved at that January twenty nineteen meeting. So in looking at keeping a balanced budget and reducing revenue and expenditures, to keep that balanced budget, I'm reducing them both by the same amount. Reason for the expenditure reduction is when the budget was approved in June of twenty nineteen, there's been resignations since that date in multiple staffing changes. Huge reason for the staffing or for the reduction is moving individuals that were originally budgeted to be paid out of the general fund to be paid out of federal programs, which is a dollar-for-dollar revenue expenditure area. So as you can see, we're decreasing the general fund by two hundred and forty, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. And we're increasing the federal programs by two hundred and forty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars. So that's kind of the main reason for, for that change. The community service fund, um, the Mary of Lord's nurse was, uh, an individual that had many years of experience. And so it's a new hire this year, starting in October, which is a, a reason for the reduction in that particular area. Um, are there any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Shelley. Does anyone else have any questions?
I just got one where I was looking at that thing, I was looking at the debits and credits and stuff like that, and I didn't quite get what debits and credits meant. But I guess it depends upon what you're talking about and what fund you're working with and all this other stuff. So I just look at, uh, what our expenses are gonna be and what our income is gonna be and that, I can kind of understand that. But when you look at these debits and credits, it's just kind of, it's confusing since I haven't had double entry bookkeeping for fifty-some years.
Well, and to, to say it in the simplest terms I can think of, a revenue account is a credit balance account. So if you want to reduce revenue, you're going to debit it. And an expenditure account is a debit balance account. So if you want to reduce expenditures, you're going to credit those accounts. Granted, in, in the general fund, you know, there's, there's multiple entries in the expenditure area, debits and credits, and that's. debits and credits, and that's just individuals, um, moving to be correctly coded essentially. In the end, uh, looking at the net amount is, is what I usually do.
Okay, that helps. Thanks.
Any other questions from anyone? Okay, hearing none will vote. Uh, Sharon?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that takes us down to number 12 on the item adjournment. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Thanks, Mark, for setting this up. I think it was done very well.
Yep.
I, I moved that we adjourn.
I'll just say, everybody that wants to adjourn, say yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
See you next time.